Meeting to order at 6:05. First order of business is to review and approve the minutes from April 5, 2018. That was the joint meeting. So the minutes, I hope you read because I just pulled them down and sent them. And I have them here.
Oh, they should be here. No, wait a minute. I have them because you need to sign them.
Okay.
Let's take a look and see. Oh, right here. For Lynn Campbell to sign.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you for taking those notes.
As best I can. I was never really a very good secretarial person for you.
And...
It's only a calling for a select few.
It's only a calling for a select few.
And I wasn't really there, so I should have seen.
You were not there.
Do you have a pen? Please give it back. It's...
Yes, yes, I've got it. I've gotten good at that, actually.
It's really hard property.
All right. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes of April 5, 2018?
Motion given.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention because Phil was at the Frontier Committee meeting. Financial statements, warrants, we're signing.
There's 10 warrants tonight for $67,765.88.
Okay. And the budget is going along as...
Yes. Everything went well. The one thing I did want to pass out, well, let's see. Amendments, adoption, yep, 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 yep. School lunch, cafeteria. I guess we can wait until we get to it. Thank you.
This is the signed?
Oh, thank you. That'll come handy. Okay. Yeah, that's all there is for business.
Okay. There's public comment. We had some public. Just observing our lovely process?
Observing.
All right. Great. Thanks for coming.
I would like to, if possible, refer to a letter from a parent.
Yep.
I gave everyone a copy.
And I had raised this at a meeting before.
I would just like to report that I called on...
I did too. I wrote a report from them. That's so funny.
You do it then. This is twice in one day that Kristen and I have done the same thing.
We're doing double work.
Yeah.
Well, you took the lead out.
So you called Lenny?
Oh, yeah. So, okay, so called Lenny, so did Lynn. But I have talked to Lenny several times throughout the year. And he doesn't have a solution.
But have you been to the garage? Have you been to where the buses leave from?
Yeah.
Have you? It's a cultural experience. So you should go talk to him in person.
Well, you know, the funniest thing is I had a nail in my tire the other day. And I was like, I've been driving like all around. And I was like, oh, shoot. And Lenny got the nail out of my tire.
Oh, excellent. You can learn a lot by sitting in that garage for a half hour. Anyway.
So he said since 1978, students have walked to the covered bridge. That they cannot get a regular-sized bus up there. He said they cannot, there's not a turnaround place. He cannot turn the bus around. He said that he can, currently, he has a van, van that goes up there for another student from our district. But he can't get a big bus up there. He said, "Kristen and I just can't do it." He said that he can get a bus to Vit's Garage, which means nothing to me.
That's right at the end, right at the end of the...
Doesn't save him any distance.
That's the covered bridge.
But he doesn't think that that's gonna help them.
It's not gonna help.
Should we ask Tony Borton?
He said that he can get a van there if that's what we want.
If he can turn around there.
Yeah. He's got the horse farm there.
Yeah.
I wonder if Tony would be open to that.
The problem is the bus can't turn around.
His driveway really isn't big enough.
The bus can't turn around on that hill, and it's a steep hill.
Oh, yeah.
He has specific regulations for turnarounds, you know, in terms of where he can and can't.
Yeah. So can the kids be transported on the van?
And I will tell you that Lenny, anytime I've called him in my two years, he's been so accommodating. He really has. And for anything. I don't know what his experience has been, but he's always been. He said, "I just can't get a bus up there."
So what's our legal responsibility?
Our legal responsibility is...
In a vacuum?
Is to transport.
So every child?
But not door-to-door.
So, right. So what's...
They can't be guaranteed door-to-door. They're a bus stop. We can pick them up at bus stops.
So...
Kate Burks, sorry. Did I say her? No, sorry. But this mom, parent's concern is very valid. It's not a safe, you know...
A one-mile walk is a long walk.
And it's not safe.
Uphill, home.
Uphill both ways, really.
Yeah.
We have to provide safe transportation. The school committee actually decides on routes and things like that.
Well, there's nowhere to walk on the side of that road. And people fly.
So there is an answer. But it's called a route extension. Did he tell you about the...
Yeah.
So there would be a route extension.
Yeah.
And it would have to, you'd have to send a specific vehicle up there. And the district would be liable as well as Frontier.
And what would that cost?
See, now they're gonna be, it's gonna be two different schools.
10, $15,000 per school year.
Yeah, something to that. Well, we have to double-check with him. But when we talk about specific routes for students that are identified as special ed and they have special busing, it's generally about $10,000 a year?
Yeah, maybe, maybe a bit more. But, yeah, yeah.
Well, now it's gonna be two different schools, too.
Yes.
Because the older ones go into Frontier. And the two will still be, the two younger will still be here.
Right.
So that's not just one trip up. That's four trips a day.
Tony's got a big driveway. The bus uses the Kirk Alonis driveway to turn on Roaring Brook. Tony's, it's a horse farm.
Is it the one that's past their house?
It's probably where it turns...
School buses used to pull into his driveway in part because they set up in the '60s and '70s, they set up a tow rope ski mountain for the, when the grammar school was in the middle of town. And they would take little buses up.
Kirk Alonis' road is a closed public way.
Yeah?
It's a road. Like it's where they...
Because it's a business.
Well, it's been a closed road, but it's a road.
If a neighbor says sure, and Lenny comes up and looks and says, "Yeah, this turn radius will work. Is it worth a question?"
Worth asking.
To save $10,000 to $15,000 a year. He may say no. And the turn radius may not be big enough. But it might be worth, you know...
So have either of you driven up the road? There's, it's not that Tony's farm is like just below there. Like for the kids to get there, it'd be much more manageable. It's like halfway.
Is it the big white house on the right?
Yeah.
Before you enter the...
On the right side.
Big, open land on the left and big farmhouse.
I was thinking it was the one past...
No, that's...
So I've driven up...
We can come back next month.
I've driven up there myself.
It's like the most open little stretch of road on that road, really.
Yeah, I used to walk up there all the time when I lived in town.
I'm gonna explore it. And I could, I could find out this week.
Oh, you could? Okay.
The driveway they're referencing, I've seen. And it does seem reasonable that a bus could go past it, back into it, and come down.
I think it's a little tight, myself. I think the Claps would be a better one, which is right on the corner after their house.
I think we should explore it. But I really do think that if anybody had an option, he would have, he would have given it.
What do you think of a private driveway to turn around?
I don't think you've seen it. I don't think you've seen it.
I think the question is bringing a bus up that road. And I think that's the question, and turning that bus up. So if it was a situation where we didn't provide the van, a van could certainly go up, turn around anywhere.
Could the van go, the bus stops coming up to my road from December to April? Because it's, it's a steep curve. And then it starts again. I mean, it could be the same thing where a van goes up in the winter months. Lenny's, Lenny's people know, "Yep, we'll see ya in April." And we have to, we have to drive our kids to the Kirk Alonis', or the horse farm where they get the bus. It could be, that's the arrangements they make in my neighborhood. Because in this, in the winter, it's icy and it's steep. This road is less steep.
Yeah.
It's less steep. Our road is like very steep.
It's a beautiful view, then.
This is where it's still paved the whole way.
And it's paved.
Yeah, this can be paved all the way to the, the private driveway that we're just contemplating.
I think maybe like explore the contingency and take, take the bids of what it would cost. And I pledge within seven days, I will see if Tony says yes, I'll say, "Could I have Lenny Grimco come look at your driveway?"
Okay.
And may say no, I'm not gonna, he's a really nice guy.
He was on school committee for many years, too.
There you go.
So was Ann.
So was this.
It's a very broad driveway.
What's the name of it again, Ira? I'm sorry.
Borton.
Anthony Borton.
Anthony Borton.
B-O-R-T-O-N.
Okay. Is it a farm or a house?
It's a house.
With an attached pasture.
But it's a farm.
Yeah, it's a farm.
Lots of land.
Yes. It's a big driveway. It's a wide, big driveway.
Very broad.
Yeah. All right. We'll check it out.
And Ira will speak to Borton.
Yep.
Could the van that's going up there anyway for kids pick up these kids?
It's an out-of-district placement.
Okay.
And the money is paid by the district.
Oh. And they can't share?
It must be hard on the family to see this going, you know...
Yeah, that's, no wonder why they're...
And when you have, because it's paid specifically by special ed funds or special ed agencies.
But I did, I have talked to the family about a van, actually. Because I talked to that, Lenny, about this same times. And...
Which school does a special ed van go to?
Out-of-district somewhere. I don't know who the student is. And I, I have talked about the van.
So there might be an expectation?
No, I said the one possibility that we could look into is the van. And they wanted us to continue looking into the bus. So...
But I think we still need to be aware that even if the bus can go to Borton's land or Borton's driveway, it's still a route extension. So there will be a cost.
Okay.
So we can ask them to, can we ask them for how much, an estimate of the route extension? A, a van, and B, a route extension of the bus? Thank you. So they would have better numbers.
Absolutely. Sorry, we would have asked that, but I didn't, I wasn't aware of Anthony Borton. Maybe Lenny was in there.
And do you know if she's asking just for the transportation to the Frontier, or...
Both.
Both.
Both. Okay. Because it's have one that's in preschool, so we don't provide busing for that.
We have, there's a, one child that's gonna be in sixth grade next year.
Gotcha.
And then one that's gonna be in seventh grade.
Yep.
Vegas.
And the preschool, it will be in kindergarten?
Uh, not yet.
No, not yet.
Oh, no?
Not yet.
Oh, it says currently in preschool. I'm just...
We have a two-year...
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes you forget they start so young.
Sorry about that.
No?
Thank you for that.
Obviously, you know, wonderful family, very supportive. We do what we can.
That's weird, because I thought that bus went up through the Poland Gap. The Poland Gap is past their house. And I thought a bus...
I always thought that, too.
Went through the Poland Gap. Because the, the kids that lived on the corner of Poland and North Poland, there used to be a whole bunch of kids up there.
Yep.
And I thought a bus went up to that. And it was, I haven't been in town since '78. Been in my time in town. But I'm pretty sure a bus...
Was there another way to get to that stuff?
Not through, not, well, Poland Gap is past their house. It's like a narrow cliff.
The other consideration with this is that from that farmhouse up the hill to their house, it is, it gets much deeper.
Yeah, it's deeper, yeah.
It's probably two-tenths of a mile to be a quarter of a mile.
Not far.
So it's significantly less walking, but...
Well, they could probably cut through the...
The two students would still have some walking, about a quarter mile.
But not all the way down the narrow part of the road.
Much shorter and easier to navigate.
All right. Onward.
I'll look into that amendment.
So our next discussion items, unfinished business. Amendments to or adoption of the following policies are recommended by MASC and recommended by Frontier Policy Review Committee. See attached list. I brought them. We have to vote them individually.
Well, they don't at Frontier.
Good.
And, but the chair of the subcommittee is Phil Cantor.
Okay.
So he can guide you, provide guidance on that.
You can vote them all in one fell swoop.
Great.
But if there's any questions...
So it is...
There's a lot of them.
Right.
We've been making hay while the sun has been shining.
Discussion and vote.
I'm willing to tell you that we actually tabled them, all of them, because we added a few this week as well. And there were some added on May 1st. So Sunderland has tabled them to do them all in June. And if you want to just do the whole list of them in June. And I just need to point out that they are really minor changes.
Right.
They're just really minor changes.
Yeah, updated language, updated reflect best practice.
Some of this stuff is entirely original to us, too. We didn't, and we didn't, we never just 100% adopted what MASC said, that here's the new sample thing. We always tweet, made some kind of tweet to something. And we talked about everything we tried to discuss.
I have no doubt a committee that you are on discussed everything.
Well, many times it was, "Let's table it at this meeting, and Lynn gathered this information and bring it back to the next meeting."
Yeah.
And then I would present it at the next meeting. And we would, they went through very closely. And the tweaks were just modifications that would fit our district.
Right.
Our double district, which is the Frontier Regional and the Union 38.
Right.
And some of the things, if you, like, the wellness policy was really cool. And we had, and Kristen had a lot to do with it. And Ned Burks had a lot to do with it.
We've already been over that one, right?
Yeah, at the, at the joint. That actually is a procedure.
Right. So do we want to vote these ones now, or do we want to put them all together?
All together seems efficient.
Sure, then you can vote.
Another thing, too, is that the ones that you think would impact Frontier, you know, high school, Darius has passed on and has made, or, you know, whatever. So there's been, they've all been sort of thoroughly rinsed through the whole administration.
So do I need a motion to table this until they're all together?
How many, how many more are coming in?
No.
They're all done. We had our last meeting on Monday night. It was a 15-minute meeting to just check off, Darius went through them with the MTA president for Frontier. And they had one sentence on each one, or adding the word designee on one. And we took out two sentences, one sentence and one sentence. We send those out, and we're all done now. But no, they're, but this would give you a month to look at all of them before you vote, so that we know you've had enough time. You know, procedurally, you'd have enough time to look at them all.
Okay. So we're gonna table the policies to go over them all.
Do them all at once.
Once. Okay. So next item is new business. And that's the increasing cost of school lunch.
So the, the reason we're asking to increase from $2.85 to $2.95 per lunch is because the federal reimbursement amount is coming in next year at $2.92. We cannot, well, if we charge less per lunch, then the government is giving for our, our free and reduced status students, then we have to pay back all the money, the difference. So we actually need to be aligned with the federal government at $2.92. So we decided to ask for $2.95.
Nobody wants three pennies change every meal, no? No. We don't really have much choice in this because we have to line up. So we've been well-educated about this.
The only choice is, is it worth, is it easier for all concerned if it just goes to $3 and you don't have to deal with change at all that way? I don't, I don't really know. That's what, that's what Frontier is at.
The reason, just so you know, the consistency across the four schools, they're all, you're the last one to go to $2.95. We didn't ask for 3. We asked for $2.95. Frontier's been 3 for a long time. They, we actually asked to go to 310 there, and the board declined that offer. So that's very good, because we are really moving in the right direction with a food service program. But if you went to 3, the other schools would be at $2.95. And there would be like an equity issue, I would think.
Yeah, there already is.
Well, you do have a wonderful school here.
Opinions?
Agnostic.
Sounds good, $2.95. Leaves room for another increase for later, I suppose.
There's always gonna be an increase.
Yep.
Federal government.
$2.95?
$2.95.
Second, can I have a vote on that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Unanimous. Vote of a appointment of cafeteria team leader.
Okay, so it's really the team leader position that we're talking about. And the job description is right here. So we talked about this at the April joint committee meeting, when you met Mary DeLusa. So every building has a, someone who's in charge, sort of the person in charge of the lunch program. And of course, here, it's Jeannie, and she does a wonderful, wonderful job. What we'd like to do is, excuse me, recognize that by developing a new position. That would be team leader. And so she would have that authority to run, you know, because of the things that are expected, which is inventory and the production, the ordering, and those kinds of things. And she's, she's done right along.
Yep.
But never been recognized as a team leader, just kind of the person here doing it. So we'd like to do team leader and pay accordingly. And I, to be honest with you, I do not know what the price is. And I do not know if it's going to be Jeannie, but I would say yes. But we really, we talked about establishing a team leader in each of the schools. And so we want, while we establish the food service director, now we want a team leader in each school. And they probably will, you know, get a little bit of extra money per hour to make up for that extra, extra work and responsibility. Because of course, Mary can't be here and be everywhere. But the, the person does the paperwork and essentially what is being done now, but without the title, without the, without the citation. So...
Put it back to where she was.
So, I mean, you know, to me, this sounds good. I will say that this was, when, when we first talked about this last April's, or, yeah, the...
We were told this was coming.
And that this was, that this was to, for Jeannie, so that she would have to make up for the pay that was cut, because the hours were cut.
Right, that it would be coming along, most likely.
So the only, the fact that this is now like sort of, not like in writing that it's for Jeannie has me concerned, because I don't know why it's being created.
Because it's a title position, and you have to...
That's okay.
It's a job description you're voting on. We will appoint her, but we can't build a new, we can't get a new position in the district unless you say it's okay.
And it's gotta be posted and...
Okay, that makes sense.
She, you know...
Process.
Yeah. And we will, that's, you got it.
It would be shocking if it wasn't Jeannie.
Well, I don't think there's a question.
Right.
And it's not just you, because it's the four other schools.
Right.
So...
Okay, so, do we have a vote to appoint a cafeteria team leader?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that is it for our new business. And we're on to reports.
I'm going to hand out the non-union salaries. This is for your information only, to look at for next year. Again, this will be voted on in June. And this is what they look like. It's essentially a 2% for everyone. And, oh, certainly, sorry. And it just mirrors what the CBA is for the, for the teachers and the instructional assistant staff. So these are the people that aren't covered by a CBA. But again, it's been 6% over three years for the unionized folks. And so this was set before I even came. It was 2, it was 6% over three years for the non-union staff as well. So we need to value those people who do their work.
Are we giving a vacant, unstaffed custodian position a $2, a 2% raise?
That is not, no. But what happened is, at the time the budget was made, these, this amount is in the budget at the time that person was still with us when we made the budget last December and January. So hopefully, the person, the lucky candidate who gets hired and takes that person's place will fall within that range, so that we will be able to continue. But that is the money that's already set aside for these folks. So, and the, the business manager's contract will be discussed on Monday, so she's not there. And mine is also contracted. So everyone else is in here. That is not covered by the union. But is in the budget already.
I like signing for the new clocks and paging system.
Fine.
That's great.
Interesting. Oh, yes. Yay, thank you.
Are they in?
Not completely done yet, to be honest with you, but...
Good thing Ashley's not here.
Money well spent.
So I can get a, do we need to vote these?
Next one.
Next one? Next month, okay.
Is it possible that the 2% increase amounts for the secretary and custodians are just not calculating properly, or something? It says it's only going up by $19.07.
Per hour. So the person was making $19.51, and now $19.90 per hour.
Gotcha. I see.
All righty. I have no report. Ashley's not here, so there's no collaborative report. Principals report.
So I need you just a little write-up on things that have been happening, with attachment of all the upcoming dates.
Boy, the school budget flew right through.
That's our number one, thank you, thank you, yeah.
God bless the taxpayers.
Yeah.
I would have been, I sat with you all, but I didn't, there was a seat up there. But I was, I was there. Ready, ready to sit, yes, yeah.
Thank you all for always supporting the school.
The tractor went through, too, is...
Yeah, yeah. Right.
I was hoping we could think about moving the June date, because unfortunately, because of the snow days, the way it fell...
Do you have any suggested options?
Graduation, and Elaine will be there, and I'll be at graduation.
You would suggest moving optional date?
Oh, I do, Phil, I'm sorry.
Can I just say that I would really, I'd love to be there.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to be out that last, the last week of school. And the week before, luckily Sunderland is Wednesday, or Tuesday on the 12th. And I'm thrilled, because I just love that part of my job. And I'm thrilled to be there, and I don't know if you do it a little earlier, or a week early, but if you don't, that's fine, too. That would be why I won't be there.
Do we want to go to the 14th?
That works better for me.
No, we haven't.
Flag day.
Oh. It's also engineering day, all day.
Is 14th okay?
Yeah. It's okay, man.
Not the third week.
You're not going to be here.
No, not the 17th through the 22nd.
Oh, but you'll be here on the 14th. The 14th is not... You sure?
That's Thursday.
Okay.
Is the 14th a Thursday?
Yes.
Yes, so...
That's okay?
That's, I may not be here, but I can give Lynn my report, because we have a lot of, actually, little girls that dance, and they dance, and I got special tickets to go to the recital. There's quite a few kids involved, and I would like to do that.
Yeah.
But I would give Lynn my report and all the information at a time.
That's fine.
You know, folks, I wouldn't answer it, but it's, it's us.
Yes.
Okay, well, we can keep going with ours.
So we're, we're going to, is there a motion to move it to the 14th? We have to have a motion to do that proper, like, and on the record.
Somebody got to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move our next school committee meeting to June 14th.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bill?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I think that would be better than the 28th, anyway.
I'm at the town meeting.
Yeah, all right.
Okay. So I gave you some upcoming dates, exciting stuff happening here at County Grammar School.
Are there seats especially put aside for school committee at graduation?
You know what? Let's start that tradition.
Okay.
I like that tradition, and it should be. You should get some perks for being on the school committee.
I would really appreciate that.
You should get some perks for being on the school committee.
Sixth grade parents sitting in the first couple of rows, huh?
I don't know.
Why?
I think it's kind of first come, first served, isn't it?
And what I'll do, I need to get control of this. So last year, it was my first year, so it was my first year through everything. Well, I was walking by the gym at about, I don't know, 11:15, and there were, you must have noticed this, Ira, when you came in, there were names all over seats. So parents had come in, because I think that's what they have done over, they put names on seats, and I was like, oh, wow, I don't, so I didn't know...
We didn't do that.
I didn't, I was really stuck, because I was like, do I take these all off? If they've been doing this for years, they're going to come in, people are going to have my head. Do I start something new next year? So that's what I'm going to do, I'm going to get notice out, and we can come into the building until a certain time. But you should have a perk as a school committee member, that's for sure. And I'll ask school committee members...
Well, I understand, too, maybe the parents have a couple of rows to sit in, but that depends on how big the families are.
So I, in my letter, I'm going to recommend that immediate family sit up closer, and then if there's aunts or uncles or whatever, so, so I'm glad you brought that up.
People usually respect that, especially if it's a document.
Yeah. So we just, we had our last day of early release last week. It's so funny, because Sarah Kettles, our IDA representative here tonight, and I wrote about it in my report. And Sarah, the RIS took care of the extended day this year, the 1:30 to 3 o'clock kind, and they did such a phenomenal job. You know, the flip side is, half of them could have professional development on, but it was every other week, so it wasn't terrible. It wasn't like every four weeks. But planned a really great splash and water fun outside. We had 63 kids.
Oh, my God.
I told you to get 70 popsicles, and we just made it, and I thought that was too many.
Wow.
The kids had a ball. They loved the program. It was really great. Kids who don't, kids who don't even need the program come, you know?
Walking through a crowd of kids with a box of popsicles is like one of the best things you ever do.
MCAS, for grade five, is today and tomorrow math, and then Monday, Tuesday, science, and then we'll be done. Kids are reporting that the test seems fair, that kids haven't been overwhelmed by the test, so I'm feeling good about that.
Of course.
Do you want to go?
That's why the state's getting rid of it, of course. Do I want to go?
To the polls.
Oh, yeah, probably should. Thanks.
Phil's excused.
Phil, will you shoot an email?
Oh, yeah, they said they're going to know between 8:00 and 9:00.
Will you shoot us an email? Yeah. Shoot us an email.
We'll let you know.
Sure. See you later.
Okay.
See you later.
Yeah.
Catch the bag of the reins.
Due to staff appreciation week last week, PTO was awesome, just for the sake of time. Oh, I think I've updated you on most of these. So Emma? Emma Linderman, our school psychologist, is retiring.
She seems so young to be retiring.
Like it said.
Whenever she sat down and she said, "I'm retiring," I'm like, what? She's like, "It's really been hard." Her age surprised, she's, she surprised me. She's been in education for 43 years.
Oh, my God, really?
Forty-three years.
Yeah, yeah. So we haven't had a lot of great luck. It's been posted on School Spring for about...
It's really hard to get school psychologists.
I know, I know. So...
Really? It seems like a dream job.
Keep that under your, you're looking for one, please, Sarah.
We have, we have an amazing intern at our building this year.
Well, tell him you're there.
No, and we're looking for one in our building.
Doesn't Cindy Burks want to come back to Conway?
You have to tell that person that Conway is just so much better.
Doesn't Cindy Burks want to come back to Conway? She's at Whately, right?
She's at Whately.
She wants Laura her back to Conway.
I know, I think Cindy probably wants to finish up her career staying, I think some people have reached out to Cindy.
Oh, I bet they have.
Yeah, yeah.
Jody's... I could actually probably steer somebody your way.
Please do.
To think about that.
Please do. You're both, both in the field, yeah.
It's a lot of testing, right?
No, you know what? I looked at that, because I was wondering, someone would ask that question. So next year is probably going to be about eight assessments, so that's not terrible.
It's not. People in Springfield do that in a week.
Exactly, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, really letting people know there's a lot of adjustment counselor things, it's like practically half, I think, would attract psychologists that are getting tired of just doing testing.
Yeah. And Emma posted it, we wrote up a nice description about exactly, you know, focusing more on the students and this, that. And she put it in something that the psych, psychology...
Yeah, New England, probably Western Mass School Psych Association.
Yeah, so we're hoping maybe we'll get something there. And Sally Peterson...
I hope to get the Deerfield psychologist.
What'd you say?
Down at Deerfield. Who's still, who's there now?
Giselle is...
Giselle. Giselle and I went to school together.
Yeah, she's, she's...
She was a big...
And she was in Springfield.
She's great.
So I, this job was open when Cindy left, and then they all shuffled, and Emma came here.
Is that what happened to Giselle?
She's, Giselle's going to, anyway.
She probably does in the Springfield district, yeah.
Putting the word out.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is a pay cut coming from Springfield, though.
Yeah.
But worth the lifestyle change.
Sally, one of our IAs will be retiring as well.
And Jody, that's going to be big shoes to fill.
Yeah, so we, we had, you know, Jody's irreplaceable, her connections with kids, and I mean, that's our main, that's what we're looking for. And I'll tell you that we had some phenomenal, like, I'm sleeping better at night, we had some great, great candidates. And what I'm looking for is that personality for connecting with kids.
Yeah.
How will this, is this person going to be connecting with kids? We can teach a lot of other things, but we've had some, we had a couple of great candidates that...
Have to be very organized, too.
Organized.
Creative.
Following some of the traditions of the program.
And I really appreciated Jody's movement this year towards student choice, like, she included student choice.
Student choice with the rest of the school, yeah.
That was really good.
So I do know that we are making a formal offer to one candidate. I'll keep you posted on that, but really thrilled with the, this person has an elementary education certification, and has been doing these types of programs, and really likes this type of program, especially the outdoor education type part, which is great, so that's been great. Yeah, we're having our 30 annual walk fun, walk run 5K on Sunday, so we're excited about that.
Awesome. Thank you.
We have over 100 families, 100 people signed up, just CGS families.
Oh, cool. They're coming now. Last time I rode my bike instead of walked or ran. That worked out better for me. Lynn, do we have a report from you? Your report is due...
I'd like to announce my resignation as of June 30th, and I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to work with you and welcoming me into your community.
We thank you for your service.
We don't have to vote on that, do we?
Have to vote to accept it?
And what if we don't?
Well, I'll make the motion to accept Lynn's resignation.
Second.
All abstain. With regret, says the, is that the Deerfield committee?
Yeah. Deerfield said with regret.
With regret.
And I think Frontier was with deep regret. And Sunderland, I was almost into yourself. It was just really nice.
That's nice.
And so, anyway, but thank you. I'll put regret down.
It's a big loss for the district, it really is.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I know you had an uphill climb with lots of things to work on, but I think you took it on very bravely, and didn't just, you know, just throw in the towel. So, you know, people, because it's a nice district, and there's a lot of good things to it, people think it's all kind of a piece of cake, but it's never a piece of cake to take over from either like Judy being here a long time, or Marty being a local and embedded in the system, and then, you know, they don't realize that then there's a lot of things that have sort of gone, you know, any, new eyes see things, you know, like walking into the, the first time I came to see you in your new office, and you'd take me to the basement, like... That was like, that should have been when you ran screaming right there, you know?
It was when the birds, it was pouring rain out, and the birds were in the chimney, and it was just, but anyway...
And the mold in the basement was horrific. I mean, at your, I mean, I've taken over jobs like that, where you just look like, how could anybody have let this go on? It wasn't just one person, it was years of letting that happen, so...
Well, it was underway, though. I mean, the inspection had been done. It was, it was underway. I just steered it away from Sandy Lane to the high school. It was a good move, except for Ira kind of got moved out of his, he was gracious.
I like being a vagabond.
I think it saves the district money, you're right there. I think it's a much better integration to have, why not use the space?
I enjoyed it. You know, I had a great, a great office, so, but thank you very much.
Well, we wish you luck in your career, but it is not a good thing for the district. I think that's it.
Great.
That's it. I have a motion to adjourn at 6:46?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.